Welcome attendees into tonight's webinar. We are going to get started in just a second. Welcome everyone to tonight's program. And the county commissioner candidate forum. My name is Jessica McDonald. I'm with the League of Women Voters of Corvallis. And thank you to the NAACP Corvallis Albany chapter, our co-sponsors tonight. Both the League of Women Voters and the NAACP are both proud to be nonpartisan education and advocacy organizations. We believe in you. Become a member of the league and the NAACP volunteer with us. Get involved. Maybe you want to volunteer with a voter education committee, the group that put on tonight's program. Let's get together and talk. I hope that you will join us for one of the league's upcoming programs. We have a district four town hall and forum on May 5th at 6:00 PM at the Whiteside Theater. And for all you league members out there, our annual meeting is coming up on May 26th at the Corvallis Library. And more information about both of those events is available on the league's website. As we prepare to submit our ballots to the boxes this year, remember May 17th election day. Know that the league and the NAACP, we're both here to support you on your education, on the issues and the candidates that you are voting on. Find a wealth of information at vote411.org, your one stop shop for all things voting. Today's forum will be moderated by Jason Dorsett, president of the NAACP Corvallis Albany branch. I'm going to note to everybody to please write your questions into the Q and A box. The chat is not functional for attendees. But please filter your questions into the Q and A box. And at the end, we have time for audience questions. Also a note that this program is being recorded this evening and will be made available on the league's YouTube channel. Soon afterwards, welcome candidates and moderator Jason Dorsett.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Jessica. And greetings, everyone. My name is Jason J. Dorsett, and I have the awesome privilege to not only serve as the president of the Lennon Benton branch of the NAACP, but also serve as your moderator on this, on this fantastic evening. So I'm going to briefly kind of give everyone a sort of run of show, if you will, and then we'll kind of kick things off officially. So each candidate will have roughly three minutes to introduce themselves and to discuss what they see as the most important issues facing the county. From there, we will engage in a couple of questions, three or four questions in which each candidate will have two minutes each to respond to the questions that I asked. Following that, we will open the floor up to Q and A from the audience. And so be sure to be thinking of your question so that we can ask those questions and then give our candidates a moment to respond to those questions. And then finally, last but not least, we will provide toward the end around 7:50ish, we're going to give each candidate two minutes to sort of to provide some parting words. And that's the run of show. So again, welcome and thank you so much. We will start our first sort of opening with candidate Pat Malone. And your opening remarks again for each of you, please share with us, introduce yourselves, and then discuss what you see as the most important issues. And we'll start with Pat Malone. Your time begins now.
Okay, thanks, Jason. I'm Pat Malone, and it's been my honor to serve as your commissioner for the last three very challenging years. I've learned a lot in three years on the job, and I'm much more effective now than when I started in 2019. Ben County has made good progress on some of the serious challenges that we faced. The homeless issue is a very important issue. The county has taken that seriously, and we've stood up the Hope Advisory Board with our partners, the city of Corvallis, and those folks have been working behind the scenes, developing priorities that we'll talk about a little bit later. Our health issues, I'm proud to be part of the team that has kept Benton County safe and healthy throughout the COVID challenge. Many thanks to Samaritan OSU and the Ben County Health Department and a whole lot of volunteers that made our mass vaccination clinics in Benton County very successful and leading to some of the highest vaccination rates of any county in the state. And thank you for being careful and following the best medical advice that's out there. We all had to work together to be successful on this challenge. Some of my skills include long-term planning and budgeting. In our Christmas tree business, when your paycheck comes once a year, you need to be careful with budgets and planning. I take spending other people's money very seriously, and I will continue to represent all of Benton County. No one solves all their large challenges alone. We need partners. And I've worked at building relationships with our state, local, and federal elected officials for more than two decades. Congressman DeFazio, Senator Elser Bluen, Representative Rayfield, and many others are among electeds who have endorsed me. I listened to them, talked with them, and worked with them for many years. And these long-term relationships will continue to benefit Benton County. Safety concerns, the justice system improvement project has been working for several years, and we're close to having designing programs and the facilities that go with them. And we'll have a pretty good idea of what things will look like by midsummer.
Thank you, candidate Malone. That is your time. Thank you. We're now transitioned to candidate Higgins. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Jason, thank you for hosting us. Again, my name is Helen Higgins. I live in Benton County. We came out in 1997 to work for Hewlett Packard. Currently, I'm the CEO for the Boys and Girls Club. I've been here for the last 16 plus years. And I've really enjoyed and appreciated the opportunity to help kids and families across our broad community in a whole bunch of different ways. The main reason that I'm running is that I really want to be at the table as a decision maker to make and shape and drive priorities that impact our county. I'd like to be a catalyst for bringing in diverse voices and perspectives to our local government, just like the youth and the families that I've been serving. And I also have the skills and the experience that I want to use to serve a broader set of community. And now is really the right time for me to step into this role, which is why I'm running. So as far as what's most important, you know, I kind of want to start from sort of the overall systems perspective. So I think it's important that our leaders, our county commissioners are looking at building a sustainable, thriving, and inclusive community. And to do that, there's several things that we need to be working on. My big issue is housing. So we have to address the housing issue. Right now, it's everything from homelessness to workforce housing and, you know, even people like me that are ready to move out of our family homes, and we want to move it to the next generation. But where do we go? So, you know, that it really feeds all of the other issues that we're starting to see. The other thing that I think is important is to be addressing and resourcing mental health and addiction. And I think the broader scope of social services and the broader social service safety net really needs to, I think, be brought more to the forefront. And I think that we're missing out on an opportunity to bring those community partners to our county government to help us do more with maybe the same amount of funding. The other place that I want to focus on is building resiliency in our people, in our responses, and in our resources. I think the pandemic showed us, and I personally lived the experience of delivering a community emergency response when we shifted the Boys and Girls Club into a full-day emergency childcare center so that we could support emergency and essential workers. And then the other piece is about keeping our community safe, you know, so how do we make sure that we've got a community where everybody feels safe, you know, whether it's in the city or out in the county boundaries? And then finally, and it really kind of ties back into some of the housing pieces is, you know, supporting economic development. It is really part of our sustainability. So we need to continue to attract and retain businesses. We need to be able to field a workforce that can do the jobs that we require across Benton County. And so I think that's a piece that really ties into all of these other elements of safe, sustainable, thriving, and inclusive.
Thank, thank you, candidate Higgins. So we will now transition to a few questions that both candidates have received. We're going to ask three or four questions and then invite each candidate to respond within two minutes. So we will start off with candidate Higgins. Question one, should the commission do more toward a goal of eliminating housing? If yes, what steps would you advocate? If no, why not?
Great. And just to confirm, I think it was around eliminating homelessness?
Yes.
Okay, so, so my answer is a resounding yes. In fact, I think we're just getting started now that the Hope Advisory Board has sent their 12 recommendations to the city council and the county commissioners. So now it's really about execution. So this is clearly a complex problem, and it's going to take a multi-pronged approach. So for starters, we really do need to build up our housing options, and those include triage services like shelter capacity. We need to get our houseless residents that are living on our streets and our parks and our open spaces into safe and dry locations. And then we're going to be able to begin that work to provide the support that they, you know, that they'll need. And they'll be ready to receive case management because their base level needs of shelter and food will become more stable. Now, if we want to build our case management capacity, we're going to need to build our workforce. And by the way, they're going to need housing too. So we need to invest in programs that have been divested in for decades. And this is where the county must lead. Social services are the responsibility of county government, and it's really one of the key reasons that I'm running. So I want to represent this perspective and bring my 16 years of learning about human services to the table and bring that message and those voices consistently. I'd also work to accelerate efforts to build permanent supported housing and affordable housing and apartments. So I don't know how many of you saw the letter to the editor from the CNA, the certified nurse assistant, who's living in a shelter because she can't afford to rent. So I asked myself, is this what we want for our community? Because this is what's happening. And in fact, some of the work in my job here at the Boys and Girls Club, we just sent a letter of support to a nonprofit builder who's looking at bringing in low-income apartments, and they're competing for grant funds through the state. And in fact, I brought this opportunity to the NAACP's housing committee, which I serve on. And we really hope that this project gets selected because it's going to bring, you know, 60 units of affordable housing, you know, one, two, and three-bedroom apartments. So I also know, oh, is that time?
That is time. Thank you so much. You bet. All right, let's swing it over to candidate Pat Malone.
Yes, eliminating homelessness, absolutely. The county has laid a good foundation. And part of our success is the state and federal, our state and federal partners are beginning to realize that the local governments and nonprofits and volunteers may have the the right ideas and the plans, but we need the resources that the state and federal government can bring to this issue. The Hope Advisory Board has made 12 recommendations, and it's been a big help giving us roadmap going forward. Number six on that is getting people sheltered, and I think that's where our emphasis needs to be. We have, this problem has been decades in the making, and will take a long-term sustained effort to make progress on it. But because of the work of the Hope Advisory Group, they've received $1 million thanks to Senator Elser Bluen's efforts and really get things moving. So it shows the importance of partnerships. Representative Rayfield in the short session has allocated 5.5 million to the much-needed respite center that's being designed as we speak. So we've got some good initiatives started, and I'm optimistic going forward that we can really make some good progress on the homeless issue. And it's not just physical shelters, it's also bringing the services that people need.
Thank you, candidate Malone. That is, that is your time. We're going to move to our second question, and we'll start with you this time. Do you support expanding Coffin-Battle-Lanfield? Why or why not? And I apologize if I butcher the name. Support Coffin? You, thank you. Coffin-Battle-Lanfield, why or why not? Thank you. We'll start with you.
Okay, thanks. I want a broader discussion with the community of our solid waste situation before I make this kind of yes/no decision. The county is in the process of hiring a third-party facilitator, Oregon consensus to have a discussion with the community. We need to develop facts that we can all agree to about the current landfill and pin down some of the variables so we can make an informed decision. What are our options going forward? How do we keep material out of the landfill in the first place? Construction debris transfer station, I think, is a good possibility. Over 20% of the volume going into the landfill is construction debris, and that's not, that's wasteful, and it shortens the life of the facility. The expansion question is part of a much larger discussion about recycling and getting to more of a sustainable solution to our solid waste questions. I've met with opponents of the landfill expansion, and here are some of their concerns. Closing of Coffin, the Coffin-Bute Road. What is the lifespan of the Coffin-Bute landfill without expansion? And there was also mention of litter along the roads. And we can do a much better job of making sure that if it's going to the landfill, that it gets there. So I think we have some this is a great time to have a discussion with the community. What are our goals for recycling, reusing materials, and how can we do better?
Thank you, candidate Malone. We will now transition to candidate Higgins.
Thank you. So, no, I don't support the expansion of the landfill and primarily because of the way that the current franchise agreement was written and approved. So if the landfill expands, then the current limitation on how much garbage can be brought to the landfill each year just goes away. So this limit is what's used to calculate the life of the landfill, and it's important information to know for planning purposes. And with the 1.1 million tons allowed, this should get us another 14 years. The contract language ties an approval of expansion to the removal of annual limits. So I would not support an expansion of the landfill under these terms. I think it's important time, an important time for us to ask everyone or for us to ask ourselves to consider a couple of questions, especially now that we seem to have the community's awareness on the topic. So first, do we want to use the landfill as a way to generate money for the county? So today, we're getting approximately $3.5 million. Is that enough? So what happens when the landfill closes, and Republic's responsibilities are over, and the funds set aside have been spent? That ties into my next question is, what is our county's long-term management mitigation plan? What is our long-term waste management? 14 years is really not so far away. I think this presents an opportunity for all of the counties who make deposits into our landfill to take action, and the number one climate action imperative is reducing greenhouse gas. So this by no means is easy work, but it's high priority. This work has the potential to move the needle on reducing methane and would help us renew our focus, our efforts, and innovations around reduce, reuse, and recycling, which is where we need to be heading, I think, like yesterday. So there's a planned third-party assessment that should help us answer some of the questions, and I am well-suited to be at the table in a leadership role to help because complex problem solving is my strength. And it shows in the work I've done for youth, teens, the community, and in the results we've achieved.
Thank you. Our next question, and we'll start with you, candidate Higgins. Please explain your position on the criminal justice levy proposal and the county services for law violators, supervisions, and treatment of addictions and mental health conditions. I'll repeat that question is kind of long. Please explain your position on the criminal justice levy proposal and the county services for law violator supervision and treatment for addiction and mental health conditions.
All right, yes, that was sort of a big question. So let me start with, I am in support of the Justice Center Plan. This plan was based on a third-party assessment that was presented back in 2019. The recommendations are evidence-based and shown to decrease recidivism. So in the work that I do at the Boys and Girls Club, we rely on evidence-based programs, and we do a lot of our own research to make sure that we're getting the best outcomes for youth and teens. I think, though, that the selection process of the location has really taken away from the vision of how the Justice Center aligns with stated community values. The plan integrates mental health and addiction treatment services into the Justice Center. This is, this is long overdue. Because once a person is incarcerated, the county has an obligation to care for them. Using medical and mental health professionals to assess, assist, and treat inmates upon arrival as needed will put this responsibility with professionals who are trained to do this work. The soon-to-be-constructed mental health respite center should help reduce the number of people in jail due to mental health crisis. And a sobering center is needed, but done in a way that the person is not arrested, but taken to a place to get support and treatment. So I'm not in support of criminalizing people who suffer from addiction. I'm also not in support of jailing people with mental illness. I am in support of building more appropriate capacity to help our community members manage their illness to get back on track. I think jail should be used for those that are dangerous to themselves or others, and we do need an update, an updated jail facility. It's time. So as county commissioner, job one would be engaging with the community to share the plan and understand what's missing or not yet satisfactory for you to say yes. So I've completed over 100 hours of community engagement. And from what I'm hearing, we've got some work to do yet to get this right if we wanted to pass in the next bond initiative.
Thank you. Candidate Malone?
Yes, I also strongly support the levy for the JCP, the Justice Center Improvement Program that will be on the ballot a year from now. We have under-invested in treatment programs for decades. This is another one of our under-investments. And we are continuing to develop more appropriate options. Like I mentioned earlier, the respite center that we have funding and very close to being in design phase and hopefully be up and running by the end of 2023. A partnership between the Ben County Mental Health Folks and Corvallis PD to send a response when it's not a, it's not a criminal matter. It's a person having mental health issues, for example. And so we are getting better at broadening our response from the choice between jail and the emergency room. But again, it's having partners, like I mentioned, 5.5 million dollars from Speaker Rayfield in the last short session for getting the, that's the bulk of the funding needed for the respite center. So and I'm actively pursuing multiple funding opportunities so that we can reduce the amount of the bond for them on the May 2023 ballot. Something to keep in mind, over 95% of the people that adults in custody that get released come back into the community, and we need education, counseling, and treatment for those folks. So when they come back, they're welcomed into the community and can get about their business.
Thank you, candidate Malone. That is your time. Our last question, before we open it up for the Q and A in the audience, we'll start with you, candidate Malone. Do you see a role for the county to address the climate crisis? If yes, what would you do? If no, why not? And I will repeat that question again. Do you see a role for the county to address the climate crises? If yes, what would you do? If no, why not? We'll start with you, candidate Malone.
Great. I'm living the role. The county takes this very seriously. And this could be the biggest issue that we talk about tonight that touches all the other challenges that we face. The county is leading by example. We have solar panels on many of the county buildings. We've partnered with Pacific Power through their Blue Sky program to get some Pacific Power dollars to help subsidize the program. We are committed to reusing our supplies and equipment. We have a full-time staff doing that, trying to match up surplus to somebody that needs a piece of equipment. I'm a strong supporter of alternative transportation so that people can get around our area without a car. That may mean pass or transit. It helps with the environment, but it also helps with income inequality. Cars are expensive. We have a full-time sustainability coordinator, kind of a big-picture person to kind of set priorities and help us integrate our day-to-day operations with our aspirational climate goals. So I've been active in preparing for some of the challenges that come with climate change and longer wildfire season. I've been working on the Oak Creek evacuation route with over 400 homeowners that currently only have one way in and one way out. We're hoping to have that second evacuation route built this summer.
Thank you. Thank you, candidate Malone. That is your time. Candidate Higgins?
Yes, thank you. So yes, I think the county has a center-stage opportunity and a responsibility to be a convener, a policy setter, and to prioritize funding as we prepare to manage the impacts of climate change. For starters, I would expand the current metrics and the work that the county sustainability takes on. How can we push for more innovation? Taking lessons from countries that have figured out how to move beyond like something like landfilling to manage waste. I'd also intentionally pair the work of sustainability and emergency response, and you might ask, why? I'd also intentionally pair the work of sustainability and emergency response. And you might ask why? Well, because we're now in a place where we're experiencing the impacts of climate change, so we need to take an "and" approach. So sustainability and community resiliency, emergency preparation and response. The place that I'd start is to build on the work that was done during the pandemic to write emergency procedures and move towards community education, and maybe we could do some more of those drills. Wildfire is our biggest risk to all parts of Benton County. I live in the county and I live in the forest in the county. So I understand and live with those risks. I would work to implement a county-supported program to help residents assess their fire danger, provide recommendations on removal of brush-in trees or brush-in trees, and actually deliver those services for people who are unable for a reasonable fee or to help subsidize the work. On the climate action side, I mentioned this in my previous question, I would fund an objective third-party assessment using revenue from the landfill that encourages public participation to help us understand what impact the landfill and other activities may be having on methane production. So this is the kind of work residents expect our government and elected officials to be attending to. And we need to drive this work in partnership with neighboring counties, community, business and industry with a high sense of urgency. Because it's not a matter of health and it's now a matter of health and safety. And as your potential future Benton County Commissioner, I would put this on our priority list of action.
Thank you. And that is your time. All right. And again, thank you, audience, for engaging with us. We're doing really great on time. We have quite a few questions in the Q and A. There's a lot of questions. If I'm kind of just looking through here, I'm seeing some things around climate, climate change. And so we will certainly attempt to bring some questions together in the appropriate way around campus, around, around climate issues and ask our candidate those questions. But during this portion, each candidate will have one minute to respond to, to, to the questions from you all. And we'll kick it off with, okay, here's, here's a great one to kind of start us off, under a minute. What, and we'll start with, let's see, we'll start with candidate Higgins. What is this, what is the state? State of, okay, what is, what is the state and city and county relationship? So could you talk to us a little bit about what is the state, the city and the county's relationship?
Yes, I think that the status of the city and the county's relationship is in a good place. They meet on a regular basis, making sure that they're leveraging strategy and priorities. I think the work that's been done on the HOPE Board is a perfect example of where we're really doing a great job of working together to solve bigger problems. So based on the number of city council and county commissioner meetings and joint meetings that I've watched, I think we're on a good path. And I think continuing to build that partnership, not just with the city of Corvallis and the county, but with Monroe and Philomath and Adair and even our partners in Lynn County. Because there's a lot of problems that are regional that I think partnering more intentionally with our neighbors in Lynn County would be helpful.
Thank you. All right.
Okay, I think I have the question, Jason. I'll, I'll start with the city and county relationship. And that we've got a lot of cooperative efforts from our economic development department. We, it'd be nice if we were in the library, which is the city and county joint, joint effort, the HOPE effort that was met earlier. It is another joint effort. So there, there's good cooperation and communication, regular communication on, on that level. Sometimes it can be a little like a marriage and that you, you don't, you don't always agree, but generally the, we, we have common goals and sometimes it takes a little a few extra meetings to sort out just who's responsible for what aspect of a particular project. The Emergency Operations Center that was set up for COVID is a great example of city and county related relationships. And that's never been, that kind of effort's never been done before and it was quite successful.
Thank you, candidate Malone. Our next question, we're going to go back a little bit because we're getting several questions around the, the climate. And I want to add not, not, not only sort of the county's responsibility to address climate crises, but also waste management. So be sure to speak to waste management in, in your rebuttals to this question. So again, around, around climate, Benton County contributes about twelve percent of the waste delivered to the landfill. What is your plan to work with other counties and the state to reduce the waste? We'll start with you, candidate Malone.
Great. The legislature, the state legislature is giving some, some help on that. There's a bill that will take effect in twenty twenty-five to make manufacturers more responsible for recycling what, what they produce. And so there is some help on the way. The twelve percent figure. Unfortunately, Benton County doesn't own the landfill. The Lane County model is a little bit different. They own it and can manage it for their own county use. Republic owns the, the site and the facility and the county has, has some responsibility for oversight, but it, it, we don't own it. Going back to my earlier answer, we need to do a much better job of keeping material out of the landfill and because it is a regional facility, I think we, we have some opportunities to talk to our neighbors about keeping construction debris out of there. And you're giving me that look, Jason.
Yeah, you are right at time. Thank you so much. Candidate Higgins?
Yeah, so I, I think what's important is that, again, this is a regional state issue. And because we have so many counties that are bringing, you know, the, the garbage in to the Coffin Butte landfill, that it's really important that we come together. In fact, one of the things that I would do if I were elected is I would form basically a commission to address waste management, look at how we can accelerate innovation, make sure that our partner Republic Services is at the table in those conversations. Be looking again on, yes, there is a state bill that mandates manufacturers take their packaging back, but that is not really the, the bulk of the garbage that we're all producing. You know, there are models in Europe about how they go about reducing their garbage and their waste. They've also got technologies that they're using that aren't landfill for management of waste. I just think that, you know, we got to get rolling on this solution because if the landfill has fourteen years left, then what do we do? So it's not just Benton County that has the issue. It's the other counties that are filling in the rest of the garbage. And, and we've got to come together and solve this problem. So that's what I would do is it's a much bigger strategic issue. And we just need to get to the table and say it, it's time to get working on this.
Thank you. Thank you, candidate Higgins. Next question. Let's see, we'll start with Senator, Senator, excuse me, candidate Higgins. Do you recognize that systemic racism exists? And if so, what specific actions would you take as a county commissioner to begin to undo, to begin to undo it here in Benton County?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Thank you for that question. Yeah, I, so you know, my work is with kids in the community and about thirty-five, forty percent of our kids are kids of color. And I can tell you firsthand that I've seen the impact of systemic racism on our kids and teens and, and their families. I think that what we, what we really need to do is one of the things we did when George Floyd was murdered is we created a panel for teens to bring their voice forward and to help them express the impact of that action to them as members of this community. I also think education, so I actually pulled together a community group of training on a class called Beyond Diversity Courageous Conversations. So I worked with a team of people. And we had a hundred community leaders from nonprofits, government, OSU that came together in a two-day training so that we can really understand sort of the systemic racism that is around us either overtly or, or not so overtly. So it, it's a, you know, this is a process. It, it's a, we all need to step along this path together to recognize that it exists. Look at the infrastructure and the systems that are in place that keep people in their place. And what can we do to change it? And again, that is another reason why I'm running for county commissioner because the work that I've done in my role here, I feel like I've done, I've gone as far as I can. But when I'm not at the table making the decisions and setting the priorities for the residents of the county, I can only go so far. So this is an area that I have a lot of passion around.
Thank you. Candidate Malone?
Okay, would you ask a question again, Jason?
Sure. Do you recognize that systemic racism exists? And if so, what specific actions would you take as a county commissioner to begin to undo systemic racism in Benton County?
Great, thank you. Yes, it, it exists. It's been with us for a long time. Something the county has done, we've hired a equity, diversity and inclusion coordinator, Johan. That's a inward-looking effort, but just to give commissioners, department heads and staff guidance on how we can do better at being an inclusive organization. The three county council of governments, Lynn Benton Lincoln is looking into an effort to along these lines. It's, it's started by the Corvallis City Council and I, I do a lot of work with the council of governments and it gives exposure to in this instance, Lynn and Lincoln Counties. And we're, we're not all on the same page when you start spreading out, but we have good, good discussions and that it's good to know commissioners from other counties that we regularly work with and can work on this issue.
Thank you. That is your time. Let's see. Our next question, this should be a fun question. What personal qualities, and we'll start with you, candidate Malone. What personal qualities, qualities do you possess that will make you the most effective county commissioner? What personal qualities do you possess that will make you the most effective county commissioner?
Okay, I'm a good listener. I, I, I think it's important to get all the information that I can before making a decision. The county has got a lot of big projects. Getting through COVID was a real challenge. And listening to the best advice that, that we can have in our health department was very helpful in that effort. And I'm along those lines collaborative. A lot of these issues take partnerships and I'm, I've done a good job creating those in the past and they've served Benton County well.
Your turn.
Your mic is off, Jason.
Sorry, that was your time. Yes, your turn.
Okay, great. All right. All right. So the, what was it? The, the aspects, qualities that would make?
Yeah, qualities that, that you possess.
Yeah. So you know, a county commissioner's job is really to be that facilitator between government and the people and to make sure that we can use the, the system of government to solve problems, problems that we can't solve on our own. And I think, you know, looking at my track record of how I've worked here at the Boys and Girls Club over the last sixteen years, you don't get work done in a nonprofit organization if you don't know how to leverage partnerships, you know, find common ground, get things done with pretty limited resources. So I think, I think those are some of the, the skills that I definitely possess and bring, would bring to the job. You also need to have good business acumen. You know, you need to understand a lot of these different complex issues because, you know, the, the county deals with, you know, everything from, you know, roads and sewers to mental health to the justice system. And these are broad areas that, you know, I think you, you have to have just good business acumen to be able to kind of keep up and, and, and understand what's happening. And I think really to have the courage, you know, you got to have the courage to act. Because these are tough positions and half of the people are not going to like what you do. But how do you keep the best interest of the community in mind as you're leading the community?
Thank you. Our next question, and we'll start with you, Helen, again. What are your feelings regarding the preservation of the Benton County Courthouse?
Well, this has been my most favorite community conversation. There's a lot of feelings about this. So my feeling is, is that, you know, it is iconic to our community. I think any thought of tearing it down should just go away. That, that's not going to happen. I do think that we need to make it safe. I'm very concerned that we have employees in that building knowing what we know and it's documented, the risk of having people in that building. I mean, talk about a financial risk to the county. I think that, you know, there's an opportunity to refurbish it, you know, do some seismic upgrades and, and get it to a place where we could make sure that it doesn't fall down on anybody. And I think that we really need to, in the priorities of everything else that we want to spend money on, if we're going to do that, I think it needs to be done through fundraising and grants. I would not be willing to put that into the bond measure for these other things that we're trying to work on. And I know that we've got a very generous community and we have people that really know how to go find grant funding. And I think if there is a community will to make that happen, I, I think that there's a way to get that courthouse refurbished and safe.
Thank you. Candidate Malone?
Yeah, there, there is no question. The courthouse will be here for another hundred years. We just have to figure out what it's, how to repurpose it, how to find the funding. I would disagree a little bit on, there, there may be some funding asked as part of the justice system improvement from a year from now. But we will, we, we're actively looking for grants. There is some historic preservation. We have models from, or examples across the country of repurposed courthouses. We've looked at those and are encouraged. We will have a new courthouse. We have twenty million dollars in state funding and we're in the process of figuring out how to match that. So as part of JCP, we will have a new courthouse and then figure out how to use the existing one.
Thank you. Thank you, candidate Malone. In this sort of same vein of sort of beautification, how would you make our county more attractive and affordable for young people and families in rural and urban communities? We'll start with you, candidate Malone.
This sounds like a housing question that is, or partly a housing question. The county has limited jurisdiction over building houses and really more of a city function. As far as making this place attractive, I'm a big proponent of trails. I like the partnerships that's been developed between Good Sam, Green Belt Land Trust that Owens Farm and the, the county Jackson Frazier. And those are all contiguous except for High And those are all contiguous except for Highway 99 and a railroad. So uh, I, I think that's an example of partnerships. Um, and uh, I mentioned Green Belt Land Trust, sorry, Jessica. Um, and uh, uh, the county has a system of natural areas and parks and we do our best to take care of them and improve them. And, and uh, there will be uh, more, more trails. And uh, I, I'm, I've worked outside my whole, uh, most of my life. So I, I'm a big proponent of being outside and getting healthy.
Thank you, candidate Malone. Uh, we'll swing it over to candidate Higgins.
Yeah, great. So I actually spend a lot of time thinking about this because I employ young professionals. And we all need them to want to live and stay in our communities, right? So I think it does start with housing, you know, we need to be able to make sure that our young professionals are, you know, the next generation has a place that they can live and that they can also start to build the wealth that we've all had the opportunity to build. Um, I'm really uh, involved with young professionals uh, group. So I, I don't attend, but I do a lot of support from the side. Uh, because again, people will stay in a community where they feel welcome and where they feel included and where they feel like there are other people that look and, you know, have similar interests like they do. So um, I think those of us that have been here, we need to be thinking about what can we be doing to make this a more welcoming community? What can we be doing from, you know, entertainment and jobs and opportunity and, and social connections? What are we doing as people that are, you know, deep into our careers to help lift that next person forward so that they get into the work that they really love to do? Um, so yeah, I just, it, it's so important to the sustainability of our community that we make sure that, you know, part of being a vibrant and thriving community is, are we building that next generation? Are they able to live in our community? Um, and if not, again, we, we need to work on that because right now we can't fill a lot of the jobs that we need young professionals to fill.
Thank you. Um, we have, uh, this is a really good question. We have one question for candidate Higgins and then another question for uh, candidate Malone. And so we'll start with candidate Higgins. Um, if elected, all of the commissioners will be from Corvallis. How do you think you can represent those residents not in the city?
Yeah, so I, I, I'm not really sure where this is coming from. I don't live in the city of Corvallis. I live in Benton County. Um, so just to make that uh, fact known. Um, and I think that wh- what I've learned, again, in the hours of conversations because I've been out talking with uh, farmers in South Benton County and East Benton County. And let me tell you what they told me. First of all, they want a county commissioner who's going to listen to them, that's going to take their needs um, seriously and take some action when, when they bring them forward. Um, what they also want is they need some help trying to figure out how they're going to survive in agriculture. So the stories that I heard about, you know, the challenges of getting the next generation to take on the work of the farms, um, you know, just the challenges and the expenses of, of keeping them going. You know, there are places that we can help with them. And one of those places, an idea that, um, you know, that I, has been shared with me is how do we help these uh, these businesses, these, actually, these farms build businesses that can help smooth out their revenue? So we've got, you know, take for example, the Gathering Together Farms Restaurant. You know, that is an opportunity to, to smooth out income and expand. Uh, I know people that are building or producing hemp products with their, the things they're doing. We've got goat yoga, you know, how do we, again, um, help them do that? And that's what a county commissioner needs to be doing. So it doesn't really matter where you sit. And again, I'll repeat, I live in the county. Um, but are you willing to listen and show up and respond and bring their, their problems to the table and help them create opportunities out of it?
Thank you, candidate Malone. Here's your question. In what ways have you been able to represent residents throughout the entire county?
Uh, appreciate the question of my uh, talking to and uh, I, I do uh, business around the county uh, from our uh, tree farm. And uh, so I have a, 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 a long record of um, being in business, buying products and, and uh, I'm got friends in Monroe and Elsie. Um, and I think it's, and Philomath, um, which is where my mailing address is. Uh, it, it, just my uh, kind of lifetime experience living in the, in the country, it, it's different. The power goes out more often. Uh, we, we tend to uh, be a little more self-reliant, uh, he- helping each other and, and forming uh, communities. It, it's, uh, uh, community is probably the key word. Uh, some, some of these areas are fairly small and uh, um, need some help from, from the county to uh, maintain their viability. And, and uh, the county has uh, health clinics in Monroe and Elsie and uh, uh, by uh, Lincoln School and then the, and then the main one. So uh, clinics and business and, and listening. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, candidate Malone, and thank you all so much for your amazing questions. We do apologize that we were not able to get to them all. Um, but we tried our best to sort of condense a few and bring, bring some together. So thank you all so much for your engagement. Um, we'll now transition to our final uh, 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 final comments from both of our candidates. Um, and we'll start with candidate Higgins, um, parting words.
Yeah, so uh, you know, I'm, I'm really excited about the uh, opportunity to step in as your next Benton County Commissioner. Um, I think what you'll get with my leadership is you'll get inclusivity. Uh, you're going to get a person that will proactively come out and listen to you and look for ways that we can bring those uh, problems, issues, opportunities um, in- into fruition. Um, you know, it's, it, this is really the right time for me to step in and do this work. I've, I've spent 16 years serving the community, um, youth and families. And as I said, I think it's time for me to, to take the experiences that I've learned and apply them in a bigger way. So I would ask for those of you that are here tonight or watching later, um, to vote for me in the May 17th primary.
Thank you. Thank you so much. All right, uh, candidate Malone?
Uh, I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. Uh, I see this job is about listening, researching op- options and charting the best course for Benton County. I have the right experience. I listen and I'm thoughtful. I have long-time relationships with our local, state and federal uh, elected officials who can help uh, Benton County so, solve some of our important challenges. I'm optimistic. I think there's a recognition by uh, uh, the state and federal governments that local governments can't solve these serious, you know, problems on, on our own. And uh, I see funding opportunities that uh, ha- have not been here for decades. If it sounds like there's a lot going on in Benton County government, you're right. I appreciate uh, the opportunity tonight. Some questions didn't get asked or didn't get answered to the level of, of, that they deserve. And I would enjoy continuing uh, our conversations. Uh, if there's a question for me as candidate, my uh, reelection website is votepatmalone.org or uh, as county commissioner, uh, contact me through the Benton County website.
Thank you, candidate Malone. That is your time. Again, thank you all so much for uh, being with us on this evening. Um, and I personally wish you both all of, all of the best. Uh, thank you both for, for your leadership. I know you both personally. So thank you so much for, 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 for what you do in Benton County. We would also uh, like to uh, thank our amazing partners um, from the League of Women Voters in Corvallis. Thank you so much for partnering with us again um, around, around such, uh, such important topics. Of course, we would like to give a plug to our Lynn Benton NAACP branch. Uh, thank you uh, to all of you all that are members, friends or frequent flyers, as we call, thank you so much. And a few reminders. Um, May 17th, May 17th is the big day. May 17th, please do all you can to vote. Uh, Oregon is, uh, we have the mail-in ballots and so uh, you will certainly be receiving your ballot via, via US Postal Mail. And we strongly encourage you to do your part at the local level. Uh, and, and local and state level, if you will, and, and vote for the candidate that best represents you. And tell a friend, tell your neighbor, right? So do all that you can do to register everyone to vote. All right, we are right at eight o'clock. Again, thank you all so much. Thank you to our candidates. I wish you all the best and have a great evening. Bye-bye.
Thanks, Jason.
Thank y'all.
Great job. Thank you.